Good evening. And welcome to the public hearing of the Finance and Claims Committee, beginning today, Thursday, February 9th, 2023, at 6:38 PM.
February 23.
Excuse me?
I thought you said February 9th, it's February 23.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at the wrong sheet. Thank you for the correction. I'd like to call to order the public hearing on the 2023-2024 operating budget. We will begin with the roll call of the Finance and Claims Committee, Councilmember Jen McMur.
Present.
Councilmember Nora Dudelski-Eichner. Councilmember Diana Revolus.
Present.
Councilmember John Kites.
Here.
Councilmember Ed Camacho.
I'm here.
Councilmember Brian Meeks. And Councilmember Greg Burnett, myself, present. We have a call. Before we begin the public hearing, just like to make a few comments. We look forward to your input and comments on the operating funding proposed by, for the city departments, Board of Education, and grant agencies. The public hearing tonight will not address those items that are in the capital budget, which would include items such as school construction. Our goal is to keep tax rates as low as possible by allocating those funds necessary to maintain and in several cases, improve services to our residents. We plan to draw down funds from our general fund balance, or rainy day fund, as it might be called, to provide tax relief to our residents during this upcoming fiscal year. It is essential that this drawdown has minimal impact on the city's financial posture in order that we maintain its AAA bond rating, which could have a lasting negative impact on our borrowing capabilities as it relates to capital projects, school construction, and citywide improvements. We are faced with several budget challenges and priorities, as well as the continuing economic impact from the pandemic, as many of you are facing in your own households. However, decisions have to be made as to what actions we take now and what other actions we phase in in future budgets. At the close of tonight's public hearing, we will conduct a special meeting of the Common Council Finance and Claims Committee to discuss and recommend the operating budget cap. The cap represents the maximum limit on the total appropriation for the upcoming fiscal year. The next steps with the cap would be bringing it forward to the full Common Council for review and possible approval on Tuesday, February 28. What was that?
It sounds like the insert.
All right, please mute him or whatever. As I was stating, the next steps for the operating budget cap will be to be presented and reviewed and possibly approved at the February 28th Common Council meeting with an ultimate charge of approving the capital budget by the date of March 7. And if necessary, we will hold a special meeting on March 7th of the Common Council to finally approve the operating budget cap. Once the cap is set, it will then move on to the Board of Estimate and Taxation, the BET, who will conduct departmental meetings and review line by line each item in the operating budget, with an understanding that they will also conduct a public hearing on March 22nd on the operating budget. So those that wish to speak next Tuesday at the Common Council meeting, we will, you will have an opportunity to do it there with the full council, because the item will be on the agenda. And again, you will have the opportunity to speak on March 22nd before the BET during their public hearing. Tonight, those that wish to speak, you have signed in on the sign-in sheet, and we will take individuals in order that they've signed up. Please state your name and your address for the record. And please limit your comments to three minutes or less. We will provide you with a 30-second remaining verbal alert to keep us on schedule and to ensure everyone has an opportunity to speak tonight. We have several individuals who have sent in emails sharing their thoughts related to the operating budget. I believe the number was actually, as of the start of this meeting, 33 emails. Those emails will be included in the minutes with the individual's name, address, and the actual email that they submitted, and will be part of the official record of tonight's meeting. We also have, for those that are on Zoom, translation services available in Spanish and Haitian Creole in order that those interprets, translation can be completed. Before we begin the public hearing of individuals speaking, I'll ask if there are any finance committee members who wish to make any comments at this point. Okay. So at this point, we will proceed with the public hearing. And our comptroller, Chitsumi Lam, has the sign-in sheet. She will call your name, and you will come to the mic, and you will have three minutes to speak. For those that are on Zoom, once we complete, those that are in the city council chambers speaking, we will then go to the online, and you will have an opportunity to raise your hand virtually. We will open your mic, and you will also have three minutes to share your thoughts. So at this time, we will begin the public hearing.
Lynn Moore. Good evening, I'm Lynn Moore. I reside at 813 Foxborough Drive, Norwalk, Connecticut. I am a taxpayer as well as an employee of the Norwalk Public Schools. I am the president of the Norwalk Association of School Administrators, as well as chairperson of District D Democrats. I am speaking tonight on behalf of NASA. A 4% increase is not enough. Please let me share with you what we are doing within the district to support our students academically and socially and emotionally. Every elementary school has a school counselor. Gone are the days when it was thought that school counselors were needed only at middle and high school levels. All schools have a media specialist. Back in the day, elementary and middle schools had libraries managed by a part-time parent professional. Students at elementary and middle levels have reading and math support as provided through the math and reading improvement teachers. Additional special ed staff is now a part of NPS, such as behaviorists, such as RBTs and BCBA's, speech and language teachers, as well as special education teachers. We have a family center, and it is providing through the staff their support to families at a much greater pace than what was done prior. While I am understanding that the family center may be a bone of contention with some who feel that perhaps it's over providing services that the city provides, I'm here to tell you with my 20-plus years in this Norwalk Public Schools that this is the best support that we've been able to provide to families through that family center. And I have the work history to really provide data. There are math and literacy coaches in all schools to support students and teachers in the classrooms. We have a long way to go to continue to provide to the COVID slide. As you know, we have renowned music programs and many sports options for all students. I hope that we maintain middle school sports. I remember and recall the year that middle school sports were cut. Summer school is free for students. I think you know we have a very high poverty rate in our schools. And students can earn credits. Students who have an IEP can get support. Students who are in the MLL program can also become more proficient in English. We have Twilight for students who need to earn credits, and we run that four to eight, five nights a week. Thank you. Our student population is majority-minority, but even if it was not, our students depend upon the adults to provide the best programming possible. Our students are caught in the middle with the property tax matters. Therefore, their education is tied to what we set as our mil rate. Our students are really tied to the fact that they don't vote unless they're 18, and they are not involved in decision-making. We feel, as NASA, 4% is too low. And we ask, please, that you consider increasing that proposed 4%. Thank you for your time.
Larry Anastasia.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lawrence James Anastasia IV of Norwalk, Connecticut. I put the fourth in my title to let you all know that I'm the fourth Larry to live, work, and give back to Norwalk. And I hope one day my son and daughter will do the same. I've been fortunate enough to be a science teacher at Norwalk High School since 2003, not longer after being a Bear myself. During my tenure at Norwalk High School, I have taught all levels, coached multiple sports, including several children of people in this room right now and listening at home. I was the freshman football coach for 17 years, and I currently run the Bears Beating Cancer Club alongside another Norwalk resident, Lisa Ravetchio, and our club has raised nearly $200,000 for cancer research. Now, in addition to still teaching science, I serve as the dean of students for both Norwalk High School and P-Tech, and I see firsthand every day the benefits that the interventionists at our school give and provide to our students, especially the students that are in most need of extra help and extra support. I couldn't see myself working anywhere but Norwalk High School, and I speak highly of our town, our schools, and our community to a wall. However, I need to do what's best for my family. That includes first-grade teacher at Cranberry, Sarah Anastasia, my son Ryan, who's a fifth grader at Cranberry, and my daughter Emma, who's also at Cranberry in third grade. Both of my children are in the GT program. They're very active in local sports. My daughter participates in strings, and my son plans to get into the band at West Rocks next year. The programs that make our educational experience better are cut. Why should the Anastasia family stay in Norwalk? Honestly, the number of former Norwalk residents I know that left our city is overwhelming. The vast majority of these friends, family, neighbors, acquaintances, left for mostly the same reason: better opportunities, better education system. Working in the system, I would always preach how great the teachers at Norwalk are, how great our leaders in Norwalk are, and how great, most importantly, the students in Norwalk are. I see it firsthand every day in Norwalk High School and in our community, and I tell my friends, family, neighbors, acquaintances, "Don't leave." Yet, on to Trumbull, Westport, Fairfield, they all go. The Anastasia family does not want to be the next former Norwalk family. Please make the right decision and give our education system the funding it needs. I understand how hard it is to make a budget, and cuts need to be made, but I can't imagine sending my kids to a school that doesn't have what they need to get a true educative experience. GT, band, strings, athletics, interventionist, SRBI, social workers. The funding is needed in our city. Please consider raising the percentage going to Board of Ed. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julie Fleming. I live at One Arrowhead Court. I've been a resident of Norwalk for almost 10 years now. I have a first grader this year. I'll have another child in kindergarten in Norwalk Public Schools next year. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a registered Democrat, and I have an "I Will Vote" bumper sticker on my car. Appropriately funding our local public schools is my number-one issue as a voter and a central consideration in whether or not my family remains in Norwalk. I have been disappointed by the budget discussions over the last several cycles. What has become apparent to me is that Norwalk's educational funding needs are growing as we service an increasing concentration of high-needs students, and that our collective willingness to fund those increasing needs through local tax revenue is not. There always seems to be some reason why now is not the right time to invest in our students. I am beginning to believe that the city of Norwalk simply does not prioritize educational investment in the same way I do. We conducted an efficiency study last year, which demonstrated that the schools are generally acting efficiently and not wasting money. Our educational needs are real. Our contractual obligations are real. Underfunding the public school budget means that important services that benefit all of our students will be cut. So when I hear that Norwalk is considering underfunding the Board of Education's request that a 4% increase is fair and financially responsible when it doesn't even cover contractual obligations, what I actually hear is that when it comes to making hard choices, our students lose. In the 2021 budget cycle, the city did not provide any funding increase, which is necessary each year to support contractual obligations, and instead encouraged the Board of Education to fund regular operational expenditures using short-term federal ESAR funds, funds that were intended to provide incremental services not to replace the local operating budget. In the '22 budget cycle, knowing that these federal funds would dry up, the city again underfunded the Board of Education's budget request. Now, it seems like we have amnesia and are wondering why the Board of Education is making a large request and pretending that this is both unexpected and unreasonable. It is also disappointing to see limited activism from our own city representatives in demanding that Hartford fairly compensate our school system via full funding of the ECS for the extra financial burdens we carry as a district, because unlike our suburban neighbors, we do not have exclusionary zoning policies that stifle socioeconomic diversity. I do notice and appreciate those of you who have supported this process, particularly providing testimony for House Bill 5003, as I did. What all of this communicates to me is that Norwalk does not have a plan to adequately fund our schools going forward. What I want to know is whether this is going to continue or whether the city is going to prove me wrong. Because if the plan is to continue to underfund our schools every year, I don't know that Norwalk is where I want to continue to live. As a parent and as a homeowner, it's very difficult to justify staying the course here as the city willingly lets our school quality decline. I'm losing faith in our city government, which is sad, because I appreciate all that Norwalk is, and I'm worried about the vicious cycle we invite if we continue down this path. I urge our city leaders here to fully support the Board of Education's funding request. Thank you.
Lisa Britton, 19 Shorefront Park. I'm not here to speak for or against the school budget. I've been attending these meetings since 2005, begging for money. It's always the same. The asks are just getting bigger. Student demographics are needier, and our ability to fund becoming more difficult. It goes something like this: The board asks for an increase that we can't afford or the mayor won't approve, especially in an election year. Parents turn out, we beg for more. The latest superintendent threatens cuts, and miraculously, we find about a million more, pacifying a few, and allowing the mayor to take a victory lap. I'm a broken record. Greg, you've been here for 20 years, okay? And you know better. Nora, I heard you speaking the other day, asking the right questions. But for the most part, no elected official, council member, Board of Ed, will discuss the elephant in the room. None of you will speak to the direct correlation between our housing policies and our availability to fund education. The Board of Ed is funded 95% by our grant list, period. Dr. Estrella and this board made a very large request, initially 18%, and now 12% in the middle of a recession. But the disingenuous nature of the mayor's office suggesting the city is more responsible with a 1% increase while taking $9 million from the retirement funds and $6 million from the rainy day fund is also outrageous. You need to engage in courageous and honest dialogue over Norwalk's slow revenue bleed versus our school expenses. You need to speak to tax-cheating landlords with overcrowded, unsafe multifamily homes, or marrow campaign donor developers who receive double-digit tax credits, or Norwalk's disproportionate intake of immigrant students, or the failure by Hartford to compensate us with ECS or even sanctuary funding. What about the millions lost in city lawsuits? You've allowed the mayor to relegate you to focusing on leaf blowers, plastic bags, straw bands, and other nominal issues instead of the big-ticket items that allow us to fund our schools. We're in a perpetual funding crisis now into double digits, and it's not going to go away. As the only party in charge for over a decade, you, the Board of Ed, and the state reps need to be responsible for raising the red flag over our financial crisis. Your caucus meetings need to start focusing on alternative funding sources, like a city sales tax that would draw from neighbors shopping in stores they won't zone in their own towns, and from those living and attending our schools but not participating in the traditional economy. The charter says it's a strong council, weak mayor. Approve it. Stop being afraid and start representing Norwalk. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Chitsumi. If you could announce the next two speakers so that the next person ready to speak is standing at the podium ready, and it will kind of help us move along. Thank you.
My name is Doug Peoples, born and raised in the city of Norwalk. I do not have a child in the system. I've never had a child in the system. But I do support what our teachers and our administration does. But one thing I want to basically put out there: I'm disappointed that everybody that's supposed to be here is on Zoom is not here in person to see everybody face up. We have no need for Zoom anymore. Everybody needs to be face-to-face so we can see reactions. All right? When you start talking about cutting counselors, teachers, and kids are in crisis these days. These are kids that walk into these counselors' offices that are torn between what's happening at home and what's happening in school, and they have nobody to talk to. And you think giving 4%? And you know you're going to have to cut some of those low-lining jobs, and people are just starting? What is the matter with you guys? How are you justifying this? How do you get this past your conscience each and every year that you are going to cut something in the Norwalk Public School system? And again, I don't have any kids in the school system, but I do relate to them as they come through the system, because I've been there. I've seen them. I've talked to them. They've engaged with me. So you guys got to get your act together. Stop talking 4%. I don't have a script. I don't need a script. I just know what's going on, that these guys that are in this audience that put their reputations on the line, Dr. Moore and other representatives. Come on, 4%! Get over yourselves. You need to get your act together and make sure that these guys have what they need to operate to make sure our youth that are not in Wilton, Weston, all of our surrounding towns that we are stuck in the middle of, that don't want us, that we try to go to, they're not going to let us in. So do what we need to do for our kids here so that they don't have to go to Darien to try to get into a school that'll give it to them.
Good evening, members of the Common Council's Finance and Claims Committee, as well as the rest of the greater Norwalk community. My name is Jason Sandler, and I live at 19 Yearwood Manor here in Norwalk. My wife and I have three children that all attend One Pad Elementary School here in our town. This is my first time attending any city meeting and felt it immensely important to come here and take a few moments to address and advocate for the needs of our schools and our children that they serve. The Board of Ed has requested a 12.7% budget increase. However, the city has only proposed a 4% increase to address contractual requirements. This disparity means that the vital teaching and support services are at risk of being removed from the schools. Though there have been requests for increases in previous years, the town has only provided flat budget to the board. Necessary support and academic services have been brought to meet the needs of our youth. However, due to budget constraints, we're funded through one-time federal grant dollars and ESAR funds. These monies are no longer available to the district, and these critical services which provide academic, psychosocial, and mental health needs for our students are at grave risk without funds being provided through the town's budget. I understand how difficult and strained budgets can be, and there is much more being asked of our educators and educational centers every day. New academic requirements, additional metric evaluations, testing, or just some of the added responsibilities put onto the teachers, staff, and without question, our students. Our children are now benefiting immensely from the additional support specials that build necessary skills from the youngest ages that benefit them throughout their educational tenure and beyond. Additionally, there is the integration of STEM, arts, instrument instruction, dance, and music that has been shown to increase learning and test scores even in our own schools. A 4% increase in the budget is actually a budget reduction to the needed services that have been put in place over the last few years, funded by expired federal grants and ESAR funds. Without the additional funds requested, the board is facing more cuts to teaching and paraprofessionals, which will undoubtedly impact our children in the schools. It's vital to show that our city supports the needs of our youth and educators, as this has been shown time and time again to have the greatest impact on their future success. Our tax dollars fund these budgets, and education is our highest priority. I stand here among you and the rest of the city of Norwalk, and I'm raving in full support of the budget request from the Board of Education. Please help by doing the same. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Maritza, Ms. Maritza Ayala, and I'm the parent coordinator for Kinder, College, and Career Academy, and also I'm the taxpayer over here at Norwalk, 38 years living in Norwalk, and also 17 years working for Norwalk Public Schools. Right now, I'm working as a parent outreach coordinator, and it's an honor to work with the family over here at Norwalk. And as a member, as a bilingual staff, I am sharing information about why my role is important for my, for our family. As a bilingual staff member, I connected with the family in diverse levels and support the community by engaging family. For example, this month, we had an expo demonstrate student projects. There were approximately 200 parents and students who attended. As a member of the um I'm sorry. services by conducting home visits, food distribution, and all the services in the community. I create and distribute handouts, newsletters, and all the material from the community to help and support our parents. The information that I send to our parents are in English, Spanish, and Haitian Creole. As a member of the school community, I also directly support the student with the SEL, that's the Social Emotional Learning, needs during the winter block, and even with the classroom. Overall, I personally believe that doing to always, we have been able to support our parents. Our parental community has improved, and most importantly, the student achievement is improving as we are on track to achieving our school improvement goals. It is important that appropriate It is important that appropriate funding is given to this, to the district so um, that we can continue engages of families. Thank you.
So coming to the podium, if there's anyone standing in the hall that with the seats on this side of the council chambers, if you wish to sit down.
Hello, my name is Keith Parmley. I was born and raised in the city of Norwalk. I have four kids in the Norwalk public school system right now. And unfortunately, they all have good friends right now. You'll know why I say unfortunate in a second. And I happen to be a product of the Norwalk public school system. With the exception of my six years in the military, I've lived in Norwalk all my life. I moved back to Connecticut from San Diego, no less. After the military because I thought Norwalk was a great place to raise a family. It's safe, affordable, diverse, and pretty good schools. This moment is one of the many when I question why I still live in Norwalk. Why don't I move to Weston, Wilton, Fairfield or Ridgefield where many of my friends and family have gone for better schools? Maybe it's because Norwalk is a city with diversity, culture and challenges that helped create my character and hopefully my own kids' character. But my kids, as well as many others like mine, are struggling. They're struggling with academics as a result of the pandemic and other things. According to the Norwalk Youth Voices Count survey conducted in October this past year, which I hope you all have seen, twenty-seven percent of kids reported that they almost always or always feel anxious or nervous. Anxious kids cannot learn. If you're worried in school, you cannot learn. My son needs to see the school counselor almost every single day to stay in school. If that counselor's office was not between his classroom and the nurse's office, he would have a COVID symptom and gets at home almost every day. I hope to God that that counselor is still there next year because if that counselor is not there, I'm not here. It's not just counselors. We risk losing aides, interventionists, paraprofessionals and teachers are on your chopping block. I asked the common council, what are the top priority priorities of the city of Norwalk is education? Even in the top five or ten? I looked on the website. I'm not sure if I found it anywhere. I understand public safety, water, sewer, infrastructure, parks and roads. It's all very important. I get it. But schools cannot be compromised. Find the six point six million dollars somewhere so that our kids can keep the support that they have now. Ask the state, ask the government. But don't take it from our kids. Norwalk, if this happens, Norwalk will lose more good families. It's not a threat. It's reality. And I may go too.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Jeffries and I live at one sixty-five Winfield Street. I have a seventh grader at Nathan Hale Middle School and a fourth grader at Marvin Elementary School. I am here this evening to voice my support for the Norwalk Public Schools operating budget. I understand that the twelve percent increase is a substantial request. However, I would ask that the common council seriously consider funding as close to that amount as possible. I am sure that we are all aware that the recommended four percent increase from the mayor's office is unacceptable and does not even provide enough funding to cover the contractual obligations of the salaries and benefits of the current NPS employees. I believe that the BOE and NPS have been transparent about their process and their plans for the allocated funds. A five percent increase in funding is necessary just to meet the salary and benefit requirements of our current staff. In addition to that, NPS requires close to a four percent increase in order to pay for the social workers, guidance counselors, improvement teachers, and the instructional coaches that were previously paid for by the now expiring Esser funds. The remaining increase is necessary to account for rising costs of special education services. When considering this budget, it is crucial to think about the children in our schools. And when I do that, is it is evident to me that there are a high number of significant needs within our student population that this budget is addressing. Sixty-three percent of our students are considered high need learners, which means that they are MLL students, students with special needs for students living in poverty. Twenty-seven percent of our middle schoolers and high schoolers experience pervasive anxiety that makes daily tasks difficult. Twenty-three percent of the same group faces depression and eleven percent of these students have contemplated suicide. These children are in desperate need of our support and our funding. Many of these students have significant academic delays that can only be met through high quality instruction provided by classroom teachers and special educators within small class sizes. The students also need research-based interventions implemented by our improvement teachers. Our teachers have needs that can be met as well when our instructional coaches support them by providing professional development and best practices. These children and their families need the support that the guidance counselors and social workers offer to them. Our middle schoolers and high schoolers that are struggling with mental health need the guidance that these staff members supply each day. Retaining these positions is critical to the overall well-being of our student population. I know that it's difficult to fund this budget. So I would ask you to look closely at the rainy day fund and think carefully about how you might use these funds to meet the needs of our children. Over the years, I've often heard that these rainy day funds should only be accessed in case of emergencies. Now I'm asking you to think about the data that I shared about our student population. Couldn't the academic losses spurred by the pandemic and the high percentages of children experiencing mental health issues constitute as a crisis for our city? If we properly fund our schools and help our children, we will in turn lift up our whole community. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adriana Romero and I reside at two Petham Road. First, I want to say thank you to the council members who are present here, councilwomen, councilmen, and the amazing community that stands behind me here advocating for the teachers, the students and everyone. I too don't have a script because I said I was going to speak from the heart. And believe me, it's my first time being in front of an audience like this and it's very nerve wracking, but I feel like our students deserve it. Our teachers deserve it. I am a proud parent of two children, Ponis and Kendall, and a proud staff of the family center. I know that what we're asking is could be a lot. And you say you might not have it or you might have and that there are other departments that are asking as well. But investing in our children is investing in each of those departments, investing in the future business women and men, investing in the pub, public works, lawyers, doctors, everyone who is part of the Norwalk community. Now, as a proud staff member of the family center, that is an amazing place. Before that place was ever put in place, I came here around twenty twenty and I literally had to do the registration myself. I had to call every day Kendall to make sure that my registration was complete. Ponis emailing everybody that I can find on the board of education list just to get a confirmation that both of my children's were enrolled. And proudly to say that we are now the like, we do the legwork for all these families that come into the family center. At any given day, we can see someone from Ukraine, from Haitia, from Dominican Republic, from Colombia, from Ecuador. And just to give them the opportunity to enroll their children, leave knowing that they had their transportation questions answered, their food services question answer, and their social service, um, questions answer is amazing. But overall, what we're doing over there with the pantry, just the first time we opened the doors to our pantry, we had a family of ten shop from our shelf and the fact that the little girl was able to get Cocoa Puffs. Not the store brand, but the original brand and that she could afford it was amazing. So again, I know you each stand, sit there and have a hard, difficult decision to make, but I do ask that we are investing in our children. We are investing in all the people that want to stay in Norwalk and I hope that my children, as they get older, would want to stay in Norwalk and raise a family here. Like again, I thank you for your time and I know you are faced with difficult decisions. But as you tally up your numbers, know that you're tallying up children behind those numbers who don't have voices. That's why we are here for them. So thank you.
Lady Chetta, ten West Main Street, Norwalk, Connecticut. I would like to speak about my experience when I had to enroll my daughter and about the family center. When I came to this country with my ten years old daughter, one of my priorities was to enroll my child into school. I expected for the enrollment process to be different than the Dominican Republic, but instead it was harder and difficult. I was told that my child needed a school physical, but I was new to the country and I didn't know about where I could take her or any doctors. And when I asked around into school, I got no answer. I basically had to deal myself. Now with the family center, we make sure parents know from point A to C, what is it that they need to enroll their child and we make it easier for them. If we have to book the appointment for physical, we do it for them. We guide them through each document they need and through each step. The family center might not be the place that a lot of people want, but it is the place that all the family needs. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anne Hennessy and I live at two Clearview Avenue. I have owned a home in Norwalk for over six years and I am a proud parent of a Kendall College and Career Academy third grader, as well as the current PTA president and fellow public school educator of sixteen years. I am deeply concerned as a Norwalk citizen and parent over the lack of financial support being offered to Norwalk public schools for the upcoming year. As we are all aware, the BOE was given a zero percent increase in budget for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year. And even with the offered four percent increase for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year, that is barely enough to cover city employees' salaries and necessary benefits to have the educators in classrooms and students receiving appropriate and equitable services. Especially those triggered and uncovered by the social emotional trauma and educational disparities and gaps that arose during the COVID pandemic. That mere four percent increase does not allow Norwalk students to be competitive with surrounding towns in regards to college and career preparation, as Norwalk additionally spends far less per pupil expenditure than Greenwich, Darien, Westport, New Canaan, Fairfield, Wilton, Easton and Weston, as well as the overall percentage of the regional operating budget spent on education. For my child and my school community, this inappropriate level of proposed school funding will impact special education services, resources, interventionists and counselors we currently have and will need in the upcoming school years to support Norwalk's growing special education population and required individual attention our students need. The Kendall College and Career Academy students and school community have grown and accomplished so much in the last few years under the leadership of Dr. Baker and the achievement of magnet school status. As a school community, we are on track to achieving all school improvement goals, have exposed students to college and career opportunities, have a full-time counselor, gifted and talented teacher, math and literacy instructional coach, and parent engagement coordinator. Providing KCCA students with these supports has created academic growth and progress as evidenced by recent NWEA scores as well as social emotional support. With only the four percent proposed budget increase, those services are at risk and student growth is at risk. We always tell students to dream big, but how big can my child dream and our students really dream with this proposed budget? I encourage this council to listen to the experts and educators doing the actual work day in and day out in schools because that's who knows what our children need and we need more. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Margaret Watt, forty-one France Street. I'm parent of a PTEC grad and McMahon senior, a former SGC member at Norwalk High. I'm here to provide input on the mental health and special education needs of our youth, which are high priorities in the budgeting for the school district's needs. In my current job as prevention director at Positive Directions, I've conducted the last two Norwalk youth surveys. And I want you to pay attention to what the data that we collected just this past October shows. Our kids are hurting badly. While this year's survey, this was conducted around Halloween, it showed that the rates of depression and suicidal ideation among our middle and high school students are headed in the right direction, but they are still extremely high. Twenty-seven percent, that's more than a quarter of our students are experiencing debilitating levels of anxiety. Twenty-three percent report depression. More than six hundred individual students report both. These are students who are not available to learn. Just as our many students who reported experiencing food and shelter insecurity also are not in a position to learn. These are, you know, the basic hierarchy of needs that we're all familiar with. Now, we all recognize the importance of education to our kids lifelong success in whatever career they may choose to pursue. But if we don't attend to their mental health first, all the curriculum in the world won't help. Teachers are seeing dysregulation in the classroom. Parents see that their students are socially and emotionally delayed. Our survey found that eleven percent of our kids are reporting suicidal ideation and suicide attempts are up in our high schoolers. More than one of our, one in ten of our kids report self-harm, cutting, et cetera. Over one-third now report disordered eating practices. So all of these are the outward signs of extreme distress. Again, these are not kids who are available to learn and we're talking about up to a quarter of our students. Now, many of our students have bounced back from the impact of the pandemic. Those who are, who have not are in deep distress. Our school counselors, our community providers, like the ones who are contracted to work at the schools, all see more acute symptoms in our youth. All the mental health professionals are fully booked all the time. This role is critical. These mental health resources that we as a city have stood up for our kids at this time have literally saved lives. We have suicide interventions happening in our schools every day. Surrounding towns have not been so lucky. We have had, we've, thank God, right? By the grace of God, we've not had a teen suicide and others have. I know many people will question whether schools should be providing mental health resources. But if the youth don't get the help at school where they are most of the day, the city's going to end up paying one way or another for these needs. Um, so I want us to be, you know, preventive and set up our kids for success. Let me also just touch briefly on special education. I am a parent of a student with special needs. Twelve years ago or so, I was here when that crack report, the evaluation done by the state showed that our special need programs were the pits. There was, they couldn't find anything good to say. Three years later, there was a reeval and it wasn't better. My kid is one of many who ended up outplaced, not because he needed to be, not because he wanted to be, because we didn't have in-house resources for a kid whose needs weren't even that extreme. Things have gotten better, but we ping pong between underfunding special ed and outsourcing, outplacing them and trying to build new programs, et cetera. And who gets hurt is the kids. So back to the survey. Let me just add that in the survey, the kids reporting IEP, the reporting they were in special ed with IEPs had higher levels of depression than the average and sixteen percent of kids with IEPs said they had made a suicide attempt in the last year. Let that sink in. The funding for these programs is critical. Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Potts and I live at thirty-nine Kettle Road. I've been a Norwalk resident since two thousand and seven. I have many years of experience in the social work field, working with the youth population and I have been exposed as a social worker to the urgent need of school supports for their well-being. But today I'm here as a proud mom. I have my son here, Dorian, who is a student at Kendall College and Career Academy. I am proud that he has the opportunity to participate in a project-based learning environment. The Project Expo has demonstrated that my son has gained many skills that he enjoys and would better prepare him for his future to succeed. At Kendall College and Career Academy, he also has the opportunity to learn how to play an instrument, which he looks forward to practice every day. I have seen his development with his patience and a boost of his self-esteem since learning to play the violin. He was so proud to perform for the first time this year. He was so proud to perform for the first time this year at the winter concert for his friends, family and community due to these programs being offered at his school. My son, including other students, NWEA scores have highly improved due to the appropriate supports and I want to make sure that the city provides the necessary funding for the school programs and needed supports are not jeopardized. So my son and other students can continue to have full access to a quality education to reach their full potential. Thank you for listening.
My name is Dorian Cosz. I live in Norwalk, Connecticut. My school at Kendall College and Career Academy has offered me plenty of opportunities to learn in a safe and loving environment to be the best I can be. I am so grateful that my school has GT, band, strings and book club. Kendall has helped me a lot. I've been in Kendall since kindergarten and I'm now in the 3rd grade. I want to continue to shine bright. Thank you.
My name is Zakiya Baker and I live at 35 Fawn Ridge Drive in Hamden. I am the proud principal of Kendall College and Career Academy and I'm trying not to tear up after what Dorian stated. It is truly a pleasure to work within this district. I want to share how blessed I am, I am to serve our community. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Norwalk Public Schools and more specifically Kendall College and Career Academy. I want to share that across the state, we have a reputation for ensuring that we empower all of our learners. That is why I am here. Pre-COVID, Kendall, which has historically been your lowest performing school, was identified as a school of distinction by the state of Connecticut because we were at the top 10% for growth in literacy. I think that what is most beautiful is that we were amongst friends that are friends at Jefferson, at Rowayton and Tracy also had similar growth in successes. Tracy was recognized nationally and I know we have some of our friends from Tracy here as well. Just before COVID, Kendall was still maintaining a Level 2 status in the state, but we had our eyes on number one. We still have our eyes on number one. Our district was number one. We are, like most districts, struggling with post-COVID. How do we come out of the trauma that we experienced? So at this point, although we have seen a drastic decrease in performance on standardized measures as the state as a whole has also, we know that with our focus on equity through future-ready programs, we are moving to the next level. I have no doubt that we will exceed our previous standardized performance and we have certainly improved programming that will offer our scholars at Kendall and throughout the district rich experiences that they need to compete with their peers globally. As Dorian said, I tell my scholars every day, you can and will shine bright. If you have not already had the opportunity to do so, I encourage you to go to the district's website and view all of the videos about our schools. It is exceptional what we have to offer to our students, to all students. Please consider the impossible decisions that will need to be made by the Board of Education if the appropriate funding is not allocated. I have a high respect for what you do. Many of you have supported me throughout the years. I want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Hi, I'm Janelle Bray.
I'm Jada Martinez.
We live at 2 and 1/2 Thistle Road. This is my daughter, who is a sophomore at Norwalk High School and we are here today to support people that have supported her. She has her story to tell, but she has struggled with some serious mental health issues and I hope no one in this room has had that experience with a child because it's terrifying to drop your kid off to school for six hours and not know what's going on. We have been very fortunate to have staff that has not only been supportive to her, but to me. And the idea of that not being in place is terrifying. And the idea that we're even spinning this around in our heads, what to do with money. This is our future. These are our children. This, if we don't address this awful mental health issue now, there is no future, not, not for Norwalk, not for anywhere. This, this is it.
It's just kind of crazy to hear everyone talk about all these students who struggle with depression or anxiety because that's me. I've struggled with self-harm and attempted suicide multiple times and if it wasn't for my guidance counselor in the community at my school, I don't know if I would be here today. Having that community means everything to me, including like the arts. I don't do sports, but I know for a lot of people, that means a lot. I mean, we learn most from our community and the people we surround ourselves with and if you take that away, like, we learn life the most by living it and without our community, how are we supposed to do that? I just am so grateful for Mr. Smo, who has been here. Like, I don't know what I would do without her. She understands me on a level that most people don't and just to have that support system with me means everything and I can't afford to have that taken away because I genuinely don't know how I could continue to be a student without that support system.
Thank you.
My name is Diane. Whoa. My name is Diane Keef. Hello? No. Hello? Okay. My name is Diane Keef. I was just trying to read my test. Can you hear me?
Are you zooming in on your phone?
Okay. Okay.
Test, test. Test, test. Test. Check, check. All right.
Hi, my name is Diane Keef. I live at 249 Chestnut Hill Road and I have been a taxpayer in Connecticut for 32 years in Norwalk. I have no children in the school system, but I believe that as a sanctuary city and as a city committed to diversity, equity and inclusion, we have a responsibility to fund the BOE budget, at least at the rate of inflation for the year 2023. That rate of inflation is estimated to be 6.9% nationally and is on a slow decline as a result of the Federal Reserve's activities. I support a BOE increase of 6.9% at a minimum and a shifting of many of the school, of the social work and mental health roles to be managed under the city's budget using the Rainy Day Fund or other funds of the city rather than the BOE. This can enable partnerships with nonprofits to continue to meet some of the mental health and social work needs and keep on providing interventions for families in need. An attempt should be made to retain as many of the same staff as have been employed in these roles in the school system so students and families can have as much continuity of care as possible. The pandemic has been destabilizing for many. This is not the time to withdraw support from meeting these needs. I realize that this is likely to require a mill rate increase. In tandem with this increased mill rate, I suggest that the city set up a fund to provide a tax credit to Norwalk residents who have lived in the city for at least 10 years and have incomes in the prior tax year of under $80,000. $80,000 is lower than the median income countywide, such that those who own their own homes but have limited income to afford a property tax increase can apply for and receive a credit for property taxes paid, such that the tax rate increase stays at 3% for each applicant for the prior year payment. The intent is that this will offset the cost pressure on low and middle-income residents of Norwalk to sell their property in order to afford the property taxes here. I know there are many competing interests in the city, but as Bill Gates Senior said, "Bill Gates never would have been able to found Microsoft in the United States without the public education system of the United States." Our country looks different than it did when Bill Gates was going to public school, but I firmly believe that the Microsofts of tomorrow could be created by somebody who's in Norwalk schools right now. We have over 80 languages spoken in our schools. We need to support these kids and I hope that you folks can figure out how to use the Rainy Day Fund to make that happen. Thank you.
I'm not entirely sure how to start off, but my name is Brian Mador. I went to Norwalk High School. I graduated year 2022. I could tell you just my name, but that's just who I go by, who I actually am, is I'd say more or less a motivator and a leader. I'm also a model as well. I just finished Fashion Week, but as opposed to being a model, I would definitely say I wouldn't be able to reach the status that I have right now or be in the position that I am right now if it wasn't for my coaches or my guidance counselors, Dr. Dosimol, Ms. Moran and also my, my principal, Dr. Moore. I would definitely say that years prior, well, as of right now, going to Norwalk High School, I definitely had a lot of support and I truly do believe that having budget cuts of, well, whatever it is, isn't the right choice. It wouldn't be safer for our students, nor would it be safe for our community and just the environment in itself wouldn't overall thrive. We're here to thrive, not survive. I had, I received a lot of support from the school-based health center that's in Norwalk High School, my guidance counselors, my teachers, my principal and I could definitely say that hasn't been the greatest thing. That, that has been the greatest thing that I've ever went through all four years of being in high school. Going to school was pretty much the highlight of my day and practice as well, but just knowing that there was always somebody here to actually listen to me, not just tell me what to do, was just overall what I needed in life. I would definitely say that the greatest teacher in life is experience and the experience that our kids are getting right now isn't what life should be about. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Patronelli of 3 Rampart Road. I come to you as a parent of a kindergartner at Brookside with another little one coming up in a couple of years who wants nothing more than to see her children thrive in the beautiful multicultural environment that is the Norwalk Public School System. I come as the PTO co-president who has seen up close the talent and passion of the teachers and the staff and how much they give of themselves to support these children. I come as a Norwalk resident who wants to see the city continue to grow and thrive and I come as a taxpayer and a registered voter who takes her civic duty very seriously. I know your job is hard. Budgeting is tough. That's actually my job, my day job, so I get it. But what's not hard is putting children first. That's the easiest decision we can make, children first, because if we aren't doing right by them, if we aren't helping the future, then what the hell are we doing here? Like, we're failing them if we're not putting them first. You've heard all the stats by all the previous speakers and thank you all for providing all of that information and background for everyone to hear. They need a strong educational system. They need social services. They need interventionists. They need smaller classrooms. They need sports and music and enrichment programs and you can't support these services with only a 4% increase, which mathematically over the years, like, it's really a cut because we're losing all the state funding. So you don't grow and develop a city by cutting the education budget. You invest in it. You create an academic system so strong that families stay, that businesses grow, the jobs increase and you make it so strong that people are banging on the dang door to get in like they are in Wilton and Weston and Darien. So I stand here in full support of the Board of Education funding request and I ask that each one of you do the same. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Mary Jordan, 9 Mod Avenue and I'm here with Lynn Moore, who has already spoke that you know, Joe Jean Durco, who's a member of the NFT. We are here to speak tonight on behalf of the Coalition of Educational Unions, which comprise the teacher, administrator, PSRP and custodial workforce. We're here to advocate for a higher budget cap because we genuinely believe it is what our students deserve. Our students demonstrate unprecedented academic and emotional needs. Many good stories have been told this evening. We have been working in an all hands-on-deck mentality for years now in the school buildings. The 4% cap does not provide the means to support a proper educational experience for the students of Norwalk. Our essential programs include increased specialized training, such as the literacy training, other programs, Orton-Gillingham and the Letters trainings, in-house specialty programs for students with special needs, counselors, especially in the elementary, and revised and improved curriculum approaches. Many supports and resources. A budget cap increase of only 4% will endanger the gains that our students have made coming out of the pandemic. It is understood that cuts need to be made. We understand that hard choices must be made to balance the city budget and provide the needs for all across the city departments. We have heard the discussion of needs versus wants and the concerns that have been raised about taxes and bond ratings. We have heard the discussion of needs versus wants and the concerns that have been raised about taxes and bond ratings. There is continued need to find efficiencies and make some hard choices. We ask you to find a way to ensure a higher budget cap to better help meet the needs of our students. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and actually, on behalf of the NFT, I will assure you and the general public, we are working in Hartford on behalf. We aren't in this alone. The state needs to contribute and we are, I'm speaker three eighty-four tonight up in Hartford, on behalf of ECS funding. So we are doing what we can to make sure that it's not just the city, that we are a village, that we need to do this together with the state of Connecticut. Thank you.
Good evening. It is so wonderful to be here in person with you to discuss these matters. And I know how deeply each of you feels and considers these decisions. I know each of you have a reason or why that you're in the seats that you're in. And they're very profound and there's a level of service represented here that goes for many years and many actions. So I have a deep respect for each of you and I appreciate your service. I know it's hard. I have sat in a seat where I had to make those difficult decisions. It broke my heart every time. I urge you to start a new era of investment thinking, to stop surviving and to thrive. We have to turn the corner. We have to break the cycle. I have sat on every side of that cycle at this point, understanding where all everyone says good people in every chair on every governmental body somehow pulled into the same negative cycle like Groundhog Day. I sent you a lengthy email with a lot of data and I appreciate the folks who sent feedback and I hope you take into consideration. I want to share with you what it was like for me as a kindergarten parent on hot summer night. Greg, you were there. To attend my first meeting when there were threats of of cutting AIDS libraries, assistant principals who managed the IEPs five oh fours, to read the reports about our special education program and know that that's what our family was choosing. Our family chose to be here. We love Norwalk. I have said every meeting every year, Norwalk is my American dream. And I'm trusting you with it. And I stay, just like my friends here, who have told you that they want to stay. Please accept the improvements that are happening, perpetuate and find a way to sustain them. I have a deep belief that we will turn a corner next year when the reveal happens. I believe our country is strong. I believe the economy will be strong because we're strong and we'll keep working. Norwalk's a city that works. We will make it work together. Please end the divisive language, work together and solve the problem. We have to do better. And thank you so much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Mason Seed and I live in Norwalk. I am a fourth grade student at Kendall College and Career Academy. I am proud of my school because I am getting good grades, learning to play instruments and have lots of fun with my friends, teachers and staff. I have I have been a student here since the first grade and I love it. All of all of the teachers are nice to teach, are nice and teach me so much. Being a student at Kendall in college will, oh, being a student at Kendall College and Career will help me figure out problems for later in life. I I want to make sure that the city provides us with a lot of money to keep me and my friends going to school at at and and having fun.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Doug Bates. I'm speaking in place of my wife Natalia Bates. I thought she would want to speak, but she turned it over to me. I don't have a speech written. I wasn't, you know, a little ill-prepared. I kind of decided to come here last minute and, you know, I'm glad I did. Thank you, everyone who spoke tonight. Appreciate everything, every sentiment that was expressed up here. I appreciate the common counsel for, you know, service you guys provide and I do understand. I will start off saying I'm a lifelong Norwalk resident. I live on Ferris Avenue, fifty-five Ferris Avenue. My son goes to Kendall. He's a fourth grader, you know. Being a Norwalk taxpayer, I was I was I was very afraid of putting my kid into Norwalk Public Schools, being that I was born and raised in Norwalk. I went to Kendall, Ponus, and went on to McMahon. And I did not have a great experience, nor did my siblings in the Norwalk Public Schools. And I was afraid to put my son in and and and, you know, I was trying to get him into other schools and and at the recommendation of our lawyer, you know, because we had to hire a lawyer to get our kid the services needed, right? The special ed services needed. I was recommended to try Kendall and I'm glad I did. And, you know, I'm afraid of the services that he's getting there, which have been fabulous, and I want to commend everybody at Kendall from Principal Baker on down. You guys have been fantastic. It 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 just disgusts me that, you know, the that that, you know, our education system is being put on the back burner. You know, I understand budget constraints. I'm in property management. I handle budgets as part of my job. I understand it, not on the city level, but it's not hard to figure out, right? There's a lot of things need to get paid for. I get it. But our kids, you know, especially after COVID, like, I mean, it's it's a no-brainer, right? People have expressed, you know, kids are set back socially and emotionally. I've seen it with my, you know, my son. And I got a three-year-old that's about to enter, you know, in a couple of years, be writing Kendall too, and they can't afford to have money taken away, you know? It's it's ridiculous, four percent. How can that even cover raises to keep the current staff? Let alone hire more resources. And that's a no-brainer. Everybody wants to get a raise, right? Right, you know, cost of living's going up. Everybody needs to make more money and they need more resources, you know? Son raves about the resources he gets and that's why I'm here, you know, because I don't want that to end, right? And he wants to say something, so it's it.
Hello. I'm Gavin Bates and I go to Kendall College and Career School and, yeah, they the teachers there, we should have more than four percent because the teachers deserve a raise. They do a lot for us and and like the social workers are really kind, like, I get anxiety a lot. And Mr. Dujie helps me a lot calm down and he's really good. So the teachers are really nice at Kendall and I think they should get, every single teacher should get a raise and we should get more than four percent. Thank you.
Hello. I wasn't going to get up and speak, but I decided to last minute. My name is Amanda Trimboli. I live at twelve Cider Lane. I have been a Norwalk resident for, I don't know, since two thousand eight, I'd say. I love living here. I now have a family. My husband was born and raised in Norwalk. I was not, but I grew up in Greenwich. I prefer to live here. However, the way that the schools are going and if you're not going to increase the budget and support these teachers and support these programs and support the mental health needs that obviously the kids need in the schools, I could easily bring my kids down to Greenwich, but I don't want to because I love living here. I love the diversity. I love the community. And, you know, we have a lot of family that live in town and I don't want to move away from them. One thing I need to ask is if you gave a zero percent increase a year or two ago and then you told the BOE to use the COVID relief funds for these interventionists, mental health coaches, teacher obligations, contractual obligations, do did you not expect them to ask for a big percentage of a budget increase? I mean, I think the fact that, you know, they asked for four percent or they asked for twelve and a half percent and you're only giving them four, you're not meeting in the middle anywhere. It it's like, it's kind of like a slap in the face. And you've heard all the testimonies here tonight and you've heard the kids especially. These kids are our future. If you don't invest in them, if you don't invest in their education, their mental health needs, everything, this town is going to go is is going to go down the tubes. They are our future. Make it so people want to stay here. Make it so people want, make it so these kids don't want to leave. They want to raise their own families here. They want to work here. They want to have careers here. You know, it's this is, I I've never had more of a community feel than I have in Norwalk and I would hate for that to disappear because people are leaving because the school systems are not being invested in. My kids go to Wolf Pit Elementary School. It's now an integrated art school. The program is so great. The program is so unique. I would hate for any of those things to go away in that school. And not to mention, I'm also the PTA co-president there. I just became a substitute teacher so I could actually help out and teach in the schools. And I, these teachers do everything they can for these kids without, like, without, you know, without ask. They will do anything for these kids. And now you're going to cut their their salaries. You're going to cut their positions. I mean, I I really honestly think that you need to think clearly about this and really focus on what's the most important, and it's our kids. People move to towns for school systems. You're going to see that not happening anymore if you don't, if you don't invest. That's all I have to say.
Good night, everyone. My name is Darcia Aquilina. I'm from Venezuela. I live in Norwalk six years ago. I need a translator, people. Thank you. Llegué hace seis años a Norwalk. Llegué al país donde las oportunidades siempre se nos mostraron.
I arrived six years from Venezuela and she say, I'm she arrived where the dream come true.
Llegué al país y sobre todo a Norwalk donde me han brindado muchas oportunidades y apoyo con mi hijo que padece de autismo leve.
When she came to Norwalk, she came with her son that he has autism and Norwalk and Norwalk Public School helped him.
Y desde que llegué aquí, profesores y los asesores me han ayudado muchísimo y solamente de imaginarme que mi hijo le puedan quitar ese programa por reducir un presupuesto que sé que podemos buscar la manera de que se puedan seguir dando todos estos beneficios para los niños.
She is afraid that her son lose all the benefit they give it to him as school and the teachers being helping him and the special education also are helping him. So she's afraid now that he can lose all the benefits that he's getting.
Entraría en mí una preocupación muy grande y hoy hablo por muchos hispanos que hoy tienen ese programa y que están en riesgo.
She is speaking out for all the Spanish community and the Spanish parents that have the same problem.
Y como lo digo, amo este país como si fuera mi segunda tierra y es un país donde las oportunidades para nuestros niños deben seguir. No les corten las alas a nuestros niños. Denle la oportunidad a estos docentes de seguir impartiendo amor, educación y sobre todo ayudándolos a confiar.
She say, like she say before, like this this town, she's happy to be here and please continue to help in the education because if you cut the wind for the kids, they don't have a purpose like they used to have with all those cuts.
Llevo cuatro años creando un proyecto de integración para las comunidades y ya he trabajado con el Centro de Familias. Y justo ahora, cuando veía que el proyecto podía encajar en las escuelas, nos encontramos con esto y de verdad es lamentable.
She had a project in with the Family Center for the Spanish community, like a cultural program. And now that she had everything together, now she think like that dream does it kind of come through because all the cuts.
Hoy deberíamos estar hablando aquí de cómo ayudar a nuestros niños. No deberíamos estar hablando de cortarles las alas.
We're supposed to be here talking about how we can help the students, the children, instead how to cut the flies.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to, that's in the audience in the chamber that wishes to speak? Yes, please sign in and you have three minutes.
All right. Hey, I'm Anna Tavashnik. I'm from Fort Gilbert Street. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you for listening to everybody and thank you for everybody who shared your stories. I I just wanted to say that I I was looking, you know, I saw what the schools put out about the breakdown of why they needed the twelve percent, which did seem really high. And everything made a lot of sense, but still it was very high. And then I looked at what's coming out, what's come out in op-eds and things from different council members and also from the mayor on the justification for the four percent. And the only part of it that made sense was was not wanting to raise taxes. But the rest of the justifications, it just didn't do it for me, saying, oh, well, we only raised our city side point seven five percent or whatever. We know why that was, right? It's not a competition, like, who is more financially responsible, this side or that side? If you go through what's needed on the school's side, it it seems pretty clear. And, you know, if there's no room to raise taxes, to make the math work, I don't know. That's what the rainy day fund is for, but I think I think we can handle a slight increase in taxes and I'm not sure other than like police and fire and parks. That's what they're for. We fund our school system through taxes. If our school system needs more money, particularly if it's been underfunded for multiple years and needs to catch up, we should do it. My daughter, my daughter goes to Columbus Magnet School. She wanted to come tonight, but she preferred to play Monopoly. She's going to come to the next one. She wanted me to tell you, if I had the chance, that at Columbus, the speakers from Ponus make the Ponus announcements in the Columbus classes, so they have to turn off the speaker, so you can't hear when you're watching, like, the reading out loud stories. They can only see the video. She would like that fixed. There's a lot of people would like fixed. That that is a want. I tried to explain that to her. But what I read of the school's breakdown- But what I read of the school's breakdown of the 12%, those are needs. So please fund the schools.
Hello, Joseph Benacasso from Norwalk, Connecticut. I'm 22 years young. I've been born and raised here, went to Wolf Pit Elementary, Nathan Hill Middle School, Norwalk High School. And I'm not here to talk about money. I'm not even sure who has a decision to be made, if you guys, people on TV. But listen, like, put it into perspective. I don't know if you guys have kids, if you don't have kids, but if your kid was in school and they had issues and they needed help, and then their help was taken away from them, how would you feel? If you can't really be at, if you can't help because you're a parent that is at work, working two jobs. We know what the poverty rate is in Norwalk. You know, I've been in the hoods, I have friends, I've been all around. You know, kids need school, like, not just the education, but the family, the culture, the people around them, the friendships. It's a lot. And if you guys take that away, it's literally nothing, you know? You guys all were in high school, elementary school at one point in your life. If you guys maybe not have had the help that you want, who's gonna do your jobs in the future, you know? That's honestly all I have to say. You know, we have three minutes. We can sit here in silence and you guys can think. If you have a studio, if you have a, not being for real, like, I'm realist. You know, if you guys have a kid, like, sit there and think about it. If your kid was in the school and it was taken away from them, how would you feel? How would your kid go about it? The help is not there. What is it? You know, I'm born and raised in Norwalk. I'm gonna die hard Norwalk head. I'll be here my whole life. Well, you know, I'll come back and visit because I don't know if my kid's gonna come here, you know? But that's, that's besides the point. Like, just think about it. Like, I know money, money is crazy nowadays. I'm young. I'm trying to figure out what I want to do, and money is all around. Everybody talking about money, 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 but let's talk about the future of the kids. And without the kids, like, there is no future. So in my opinion, like, if you don't have kids, think about if we did have a kid in the school system, with an amazing teacher, principal, counselor, whatever the case may be, take it away. Now your kid comes home crying, but you can't help your kid. Why? Because you're at work. You can't help your kid because you're at work, but there's no help at school. The street is the only answer to that. So let's try and switch that up and, you know, bring the family, the culture back. This is Norwalk, Connecticut, you know? We live for this. Thank you.
Okay. If there is anyone who is signed on via Zoom from the public that wishes to speak, if you could raise your hand electronically, we will add you as a panelist and turn on, and turn your mic on to allow you to speak. So at this time, if there's anyone who is zooming in, who wishes to speak during the public hearing, please raise your hand and we will acknowledge you.
The first person is Diane LaRocella, if you can unmute.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you so much. Sorry about the video. It's, I don't know why it's a yellow rainfall around me. Anyway, for the record, my name is Diane LaRocella. I live at 21 Little Fox Lane. This year I celebrate 40 years in this fine city. I cannot believe it. I am a senior, a young senior. I am a renter. I'm a citizen advocate. I've worked with many of you over the years. I thank you, City Council Chairman Burnett, the mayor, staff. Thank you for having a virtual option for those of us that have things we must do at home and we could not make it in person. And thank you for the translators. I think that's terrific, that we in our diversity affords this. I really appreciate and I support schools, teachers, students, and principals. But I also appreciate and support our kids. I'm here tonight because I am asking that you do not raise the cap yet until both the Board of Ed and the city come together and take a harder look of looking under every rock, which is a phrase that has been used in the past, trying to find savings in both of your budgets. But I want to focus on the Board of Ed budget. I think some of the parents have been misled by the Norwalk Public School as far as the operating budget. I would like to see the administration of the Board of Ed take a look at their budget. And I appreciate the phrase "needs versus wants." While I do believe the Family Center idea was a brilliant one, the way that it was handled was not. I would like the parents to take a look and make sure that all the money that has been asked, requested for over the years, especially the last couple, is necessary in the manner that it was executed. I, for one, attempted to make sure that if we had a family center, which sounded like a great idea, we place it in a city-owned building. That would have reduced the cost by a lot. We invested as taxpayers by giving the money, over a million dollars to outfit the center. It's not even in a city building, my understanding, unless we purchased that building, and I don't think so. So that could have been done in a much more fiscally responsible way, and it was not. The idea was good. I appreciate the stories tonight. But the way the administration of the Board of Ed and Norwalk Public Schools handled it was not fiscally responsible. Another thing that the Board of Ed needs to look for, and parents, please hold their feet to the fire. And that is, what I've observed over the years is a explosion of high-level staff, administrative staff at the superintendent's school. I would much rather see the money be placed for the social and emotional needs, the counselors keeping sports in. Parents, go and clamor that the Board of Ed requests in good conscience a superintendent of school. I propose that Dr. Estrada reduce the high overhead of her administrators by a third, by a third to half, so that we have more money, but not raise the cap for seniors who can't afford it. I'll wrap up now. We have to reduce duplicative services. We also, parents, take a look, we must, the electricity costs in all of our schools is way too high. We have squandered hundreds of thousands of dollars because we don't have solar panels on the ground, on carports at our schools, and on enough rooftops. No matter what the administration, Land, Houston Building Management says, we have squandered hundreds of thousands of dollars. That savings of creating electricity could go towards the schools and not raising. On the revenue side, please, let's look for a full-time grant manager and a team that will pay for itself so that our, our other, on both sides of the aisle, that they don't, they've been hired to do a certain job. They should not be responsible for finding and writing up all the grants and following up. That should be done by people that have been trained. We need a full-time grant coordinator and a team, and I will be forwarding this later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diane. Is there any, if there's anyone else who wishes to speak that's logged on via Zoom, please raise your hand.
Next, we have Marissa Mangone. Please unmute.
Hi, can you hear me, everyone? I'm good? Okay. Hi, all. My name is Marissa Mangone, and I reside at 15 Loveville Manor in East Norwalk. I am a lifelong Norwalk resident, a graduate of Norwalk High School. And most importantly, I am the incredibly proud parent of a seventh-grade Nathan Hill student and a sixth-grade special education student. In addition, I have the privilege of working for Mid Fairfield Community Care Center, a Norwalk-based nonprofit and the largest provider of children's mental health services in Norwalk. I've had the opportunity to connect with some of you over the last few weeks where we spoke in depth about the critical work Mid Fairfield and other community-based organizations are doing in Norwalk and within Norwalk Public Schools to address the children's mental health crisis. I so appreciate your willingness to listen, ask questions, and understand the impact and importance of equitable, accessible, and affordable access to mental health care for our children. Within the last few years, Mid Fairfield has developed a strong partnership with the City of Norwalk's Community Services Department and Norwalk Public Schools. Currently, we are providing a continuum of mental health services within all 21 Norwalk Public Schools. Our clinicians are embedded and onsite within Norwalk and Bryan McMahon High School. We have clinicians embedded in all four middle schools. We provide trauma-based group interventions in all 12 Norwalk Elementary Schools. We work closely with teachers, school counselors, administrators, and other support staff on a daily basis to ensure our mental health services are seamlessly integrated into the schools. In addition to the individual family and group therapy and care coordination and psycho, parent psychoeducation, we also provide trauma-informed care trainings and consultation services to NPS administrators, teachers, and paraprofessionals. I know you all have an incredibly challenging task at hand, but I did want to take this opportunity to reiterate, as so have many others tonight, that the children's mental health crisis is not getting better. It's getting worse. In a Pew Research Center survey conducted in October 2022, 40% of parents said that they are extremely worried about their children struggling with anxiety or depression. In fact, parents now worry more about their children's mental health than any other parental concern, including bullying, abduction, and even drugs and alcohol. Sadly, parental concerns about their children's mental health are well-founded as Connecticut, just like the rest of the country, is experiencing a children's mental health crisis that in large part was triggered by the social distancing and isolation requirements of the pandemic. Further evidence of this mental health crisis was revealed in a recent Norwalk youth survey conducted in October 2022 by Positive Directions for the Nora Partnership, which quantified dangerously high levels of anxiety, depression, and suicidal ideation among Norwalk's middle and high school students. I won't get into the data, as you've already heard of it tonight. But I did want to just mention that while the data focused on the mental health needs of the middle and high school students, we are also seeing Norwalk children as young as seven and eight years old self-harming. Some have even attempted suicide. The sad fact is that even though we helped thousands of Norwalk children last year, we simply cannot keep up with Norwalk's demand for our services. This demand spans across all of our programs, especially within our school-based programs. To meet this growing demand, we not only need to ensure we are maintaining our current resources, but in reality, we need to deploy more resources, including more highly-trained clinicians and specialized interventions, especially within Norwalk Public Schools. We are ready to do so, but we need your help. Lastly, as a parent, I can think of nothing more important than to ensure not just my children, but all of Norwalk's children have access to the mental health services they desperately need. Thank you.
Next, we have Jody Sattler. Please unmute.
Sorry, is it me? Sorry about that. Okay, it cut out for just a second. My name is Jody Sattler. I live at 17 Highland Avenue. I am the co-chair of the School Governance Council at Bryan McMahon High School, and I have a senior and a sophomore who attend the school. I'm here to advocate for the Bryan McMahon High School and resources we need funded for our school. I understand there's a lot of emotion around the budget increases and what the city can afford versus what the Board of Ed is asking for. I'm not here to tell you that I know what the number should be, but I'm here to ask you to support the school so our kids can be successful. First and foremost, we need classroom teachers and staff that work directly with students every day. At the high school, it has become increasingly hard to hire math and science teachers, especially since Bryan McMahon has grown exponentially over the past few years. There are many students who have been without both of these subject matter experts throughout the past year. We can't keep adding students without adding more staff and class offerings. Staff that works on special projects and programs is nice to have, but not when we have highly-paid Norwalk Public Schools employees who are not speaking to students on a daily basis. I hope some of this money can be focused on recruiting and hiring teachers for our students who need to meet a lot of the state STEM requirements that are now required of students. We also need more guidance counselors at our high schools to help our students with mental health, college, and career readiness. I was shocked when the district funded more guidance for elementary schools, but not the high schools. It's nice to have guidance in the elementary schools, but the high school students really need the help more. When my kids were in elementary school, I remember the principal from Bryan McMahon asking for full funding for the high schools because bigger kids mean bigger problems. I never understood what that meant until my kids entered to high school, and now I get it. How do we expect our students to be successful when so many teachers have left and it's hard to find replacements, especially for these high-learning subjects such as physics, chemistry, biology, and calculus? Many of our teachers see these budget wars as a sign of a poor place to work, and it hurts our ability to hire. So please, we need more guidance counselors, more support for our high school teachers, and recruiting for more math and science teachers. Please consider this in your decision to fund our schools. Thank you.
Next, we have Iliana Zunega. Please unmute.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, I would like to appreciate all of you for the invaluable time and the devote, what you devote to our city. My name is Iliana Suniga. I live in 8 Ronnie Brook Lane. I know this is not an easy job, and I do not envy any of you for the decisions that you have to make. As a proud mom of two boys, a junior in PTEC and a freshman in CGS, I have experienced firsthand, let many others here tonight, the struggle of teens with mental health through COVID and beyond. I am lucky that our family is able to provide mental health services privately, but I can attest that even with that support, the school counselors have been pivotal to our children working through trauma, anxiety, and suicidal ideation. As a founder of Latinos Unidos, a group here in Norwalk with almost 5,000 members of our Latino community, I see firsthand the needs of all these families with children in the system. The Family Center, contrary to what some people may say, is not a one. We cannot say that we want to be a diverse city without supporting our school, that house a majority of children that are minorities and many cases with special needs. I remember when a lot of you were campaigning to get elected. I celebrated the night that the Norwalk Nine got elected and how diverse our city council was becoming. I beg you to please remember why you ran, why you're putting all these long hours, why you're doing what you're doing, and please put our children first. I know it's not an easy decision. I know that it sits on you, and it's easier for us to sit here and judge and complain, but you have the future of our children in our hands. So I beg you, if we want to have diversity in this town, we need to support our children, and we need to put our money where our mouth's are. Thank you so much for your time, and have a great evening.
Next, we have Gloria Niderer. Please unmute. Just to let you know, the people that are raising their hand, I'm promoting you to a panelist, so it may take a few seconds for you to come over. So just be patient. If you see your screen go away for a second.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gloria Niderer. I live at 36 Pettum Road in Norwalk. You've heard from a number of people tonight, but I question if you are all really listening. We say fund our schools, and historically you talk about AAA bond ratings and no higher taxes for our financially disadvantaged. Have you all given up already on solving this problem of us versus them, the schools versus city or any other city department? For decades, since I can remember, in the 1980s, Norwalk officials have consistently failed to financially support Norwalk Public Schools. I remember everyone loved when Mr. Esposito was mayor. What's not to love when you don't have any raises, raising taxes, yet don't notice or don't care that there wasn't any investment in our schools? Now we are dealing with a situation of decrepit buildings and asbestos abatement. But let's talk about the elephant in the room. The fact that the percentage number increase offered by the mayor does not even cover contractual obligations of NPS. This council's flat funding a year ago caused this issue. These kids, NPS had to use one-time funding to pay for the much-needed support that these kids need. These kids that have been brave enough to come before you to speak to you about their experience. I promise you, just as Ms. Watts stated with facts tonight, that there are many more kids like the ones that came before you tonight. It's absolutely gross that you do not at least cover these costs. How can we ask you all to cover more when you can't cover the life support these kids need? And before anyone says these kids can get that support from other places and not in schools, you need to remember that a school and its staff feels like a second home to many students. To some, it feels like the only solid foundation that they have in their lives. Social workers, counselors, and SEL professionals. Social workers, counselors, and SEL programs need to stay in the schools, and they need to be properly funded. It's time to break the cycle of mediocre investment in our schools. Many of you were elected specifically to get it done, don't forget, and it's time to get to work and figure it out. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Audra Good. You can unmute.
Hi. Hi, everyone. My name is Audra Good. I live at Three Cotton Tail Road, and I've been a resident of Norwalk for twenty-five years. I'm also been a loyal Norwalk Public Schools parent until last year, and I'm also a current library media specialist on the elementary level here in Norwalk. I have spoken up for the budget in the past many times and have seen us in similar positions throughout the years. I've spoken on class sizes. I spoke up for the library paraprofessionals when they were cut in two thousand eleven. I've spoken when assistant principals were cut and other positions were cut throughout the years. I've seen that Norwalk had a history of being consistently underfunded and understaffed. And as a parent, that was always stressful, but I stuck by Norwalk and loved the experience my children had. We have made great strides in replenishing staffing that was devastated by these cuts throughout all of those years. My current role as a full-time elementary school library media specialist was actually originally cut from our schools in nineteen ninety-eight and took over twenty years to rebuild and bring back to our schools. This year, we have elementary library media specialists in almost every school, and middle and high schools have library media specialists as well. Part-time staffing and lack of training had a lasting impact on our libraries, and our new elementary LMS have been working tirelessly this year to revive libraries in some schools that had gone without for years. To consider any cuts, just as we are rebuilding these programs, would be impossible to overcome. As a parent, I mentioned I had seen many positions that were lost throughout the years, literacy and instructional coaches and improvement teachers, and we've create, brought all of those positions back in a time that we need them. New positions have been created that were always needed, like elementary school counselors and staff, such as our RBTs and BSBA's that service our special education students. To consider any cuts from school staffing right now, when teachers are already working their hardest, would be devastating to the entire school community. My own Department of Library Media Specialists and Instructional Coaches for Digital Literacy have built robust systems of support for our staff and students, especially during COVID time and since. And those of us that have had time to develop our partnerships and programs are vital resources for our schools. Throughout COVID, we had to make significant changes to our methods of teaching and how our schools operated, and we are finally settling into our new path forward. And the values, valuable support mine and other departments have been able to provide is still as much of a need as ever. And this administration and Board of Ed has been working to provide those supports that are very important. Please do not send us backward. I ask that you consider meeting the full budget request for our schools so that we can continue the progress we have made. Thank you for your time.
Michael McCarthy, please unmute.
Okay, hi. I'm sitting here, listening, and I'm, I saw Jody talking for Brian McMahon, the student council, the student of governance. Anyway, I'm also on that council, and I wanted to say that, to make it really quick, I've no, no written anything. This is from my heart right here. I moved here in two thousand six. And I live on Richards Avenue in the condo, the one that burned down in two thousand seventeen. Anyway, I substituted taught here for public school, Norwalk Public Schools. And that was, you probably might have a hard time understanding me because I had a severe accident thirty-seven years ago in Michigan, so I have a head injury. But when I moved here in two thousand six, I started teaching at Fox Run right up the road. And it was the best thing I'd ever done in my life because it was a shocking thing. I remember, I'll never forget the girl in one of my classes said, and later on that day at the end of school, her father came, picked her up, and she said, "Aren't you," she looked at me and said, "aren't you embarrassed doing what you're doing, teaching?" Because it really was the first time anybody, like, use a new thing. I was a shock for that, to start doing that. Anyway, I taught for ten years. Ten years later, I finished in Rowayden School, and those were the best ten years of my life, I'll tell you. And I, if you do not come up with the money to give the appropriate amount of money to what is needed for your children in Norwalk schools, the children are the best. They'll all remember me, Mr. Mr. M. I'm the guy that went around on the scooter, the electric scooter, on all the elementary schools, except for the ones that were not accessible for wheelchairs, such as Wolf Pit or Jefferson or whatever. Anyway, you really have to access that rainy day fund, and I'm all, I'm really in, in support of Brian McMahon also. They need help. My, my son is now, now he's a junior in Brian McMahon on the football team. I've, I've been sick. He's a junior right now. I'm Brian McMahon. He's got the SAT coming up next month, March twenty-second, and I really want to get more support for all the, everything, and Brian McMahon needs it the most, I think, of all the schools, of course. Thank you very much. Thank you for putting up with my my poor, my poor speech. Sorry. Thank you.
Nora King.
You guys see me? I'm here. Okay. Hi, guys. How are you? Um, my name is Nora King. I am, um, prior, I sat in your seats, and I was also on the Planning Commission. I reside at Seventeen Covewood Drive in Norwalk, Connecticut. And as most of you know, I have been a champion for the Board of Ed and for Norwalk Public Schools for over twelve years. It was actually one of the reasons I originally ran for office and sat in your seats. Um, and I am sure as Mayor Rilling can verify, I have been relentless when I was on the Planning Commission and as a common councilperson in supporting the Board of Ed for everything from more funding to more teachers to better schools to the turf fields. You name it, I championed it in my, you know, twelve years serving the city. However, tonight, I'm here on a different sort of wavelength. I actually do not support um, funding the Board of Ed. Um, I feel I have two children in this. Well, I don't have two children anymore. I had two children that went through the public school system. My son is now attending a school in Fairfield as a freshman. I pulled him out after the middle school years, and I have a daughter who's in fifth grade at Rowayden Elementary School. Um, what I have seen is that Norwalk was heading in the right direction with academics in the schools, and it no longer is doing that. We have lost focus um, in the past two to three years, and I think blaming COVID only goes so far. This new superintendent has had a lack of accountability under the Board of Ed leadership right now. There's been a waste in money. The priorities are out of focus. She is burning teachers out and burning quality teachers out that have been here for a long time with a lack of strategy focused on the academics of our children. Um, Dr. Estrella has made it perfectly clear that she does not want parental involvement, that she does not see eye to eye with many parents on academics. And when I'm talking about academics, I'm talking about basic things like the kids knowing their fifty states, like their kids knowing their multiplication tables, like the kids knowing how to read. I think all the counselors and all this other focus could be done at community centers outside of the school. The problems could be identified, but I think if the kids were in school focused on learning and stretching their minds and learning what they're going to need to survive when they get out of elementary and middle school and high school in, you know, the real world, they need to be prepared, and we are not doing a good job of preparing our kids. Now, I speak as a mother who has had two kids go through the elementary school and one child going through the middle school. I don't have a full grasp of the high schools. I can only tell you what I witnessed in these schools. My son had a totally different academic experience than my daughter has had.
Thirty seconds.
I don't fault the, I don't fault the teachers. I think her lack of focus has been, you know, on welcome centers and incubators and pathways for elementary school. She's demonstrated that she does not appreciate involvement from the community, and she doesn't feel she has accountability. A good example of that is what she did with the power of the Governance Council. So I applaud Harry Rilling for only putting four percent into the budget for the Board of Ed. I actually think it's four percent too much. I feel like they should be defunded until they actually start having accountability to the taxpayers and to the parents in this town. Thank you, and I appreciate all you do, all of you. I know how, how time-consuming it can be. Thank you.
Lindsay Grega.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Lindsay Grega. I live at sixteen Narromake Avenue in Norwalk. I have two sons at Rowayden Elementary School. One is in first grade and one is in third grade, and both receive services under IEPs, and they have since they started in the public schools at age three. I cannot begin to express the gratitude our family has for the teachers, the therapists, the paraprofessionals, the social workers, guidance counselors that our kids have worked with in the school system. Their commitment and dedication has been nothing short of exceptional for us. They're attentive, they're caring, they provide the absolute best support to my children. And without the paras and the therapists and the counselors, my kids would be behind, lost, and just all-around discouraged. Many people over the years have suggested not sending our kids to public schools in Norwalk. I have defended my family's decision to live here countless times due to the outstanding support that my kids get in addition to their education. These proposed budget cuts validate the fears of families who are moving to this area, who are doing research about the schools around here, and not only will people not move here, they will begin to leave. I love Norwalk. I've lived here for twenty years. I'm establishing a business here. I'm committed to the success of Norwalk and all the people, children, adults who live here. It is just unfathomable to me that we would, there would be cuts of this magnitude to the most valuable resource of any community, which is education, which is schools. I think our kids deserve better. Our teachers and staff deserve better. They deserve to feel supported. And I heard someone say somewhere along the way that budgets are values, and by not funding our schools, it sends the message that you do not value them. So I really hope that you will reconsider the budget and do the right thing and really fund our schools so they can thrive, not just survive, like someone said. And thank you all for your time. I know that this job is difficult, and I just want to acknowledge that. I appreciate all of you, and yeah, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Once again, if there's anyone that is zooming in that wishes to speak, please raise your hand electronically, and we will acknowledge you and add you as a panelist to speak.
Colin Houston.
Good evening, friends. I know it's been a long night, but I, I just wanted to, to chime in briefly to, to add my thanks for this entire process to the council members, to the members of the community, to everyone for making their voice heard in this, you know, very difficult conversation, but very important conversation. And as somebody who has, you know, worked with many of you on the council on some of these issues for many years, I know it sometimes can seem like a very us versus them kind of thing, where everybody's piling on and saying, "Don't do this, don't do that." And I wanted to just acknowledge that what I think most of us know and hopefully appreciate that it's not us versus them, that everyone on the council is there because they also love Norwalk, because they support the city and they want to invest in its future. So I think we're all, we all know that we're all in this together and that there is a, there is a way to find a way forward. What I will just say to you, and I've said this to many of you individually, is that in this budget, which is certainly a lot of money, there is very, very, very little fat to trim. And I do think that there are ways that we can fund these important priorities while also taking into consideration the very important role that you have to make sure that the Norwalk taxes do not get to a point where they are onerous for the very families we're trying to support here and that can protect our cities' investments and, you know, investment ratings going forward. I know there are concerns about the MBR and accountability and so on. So I just want to say that, you know, I, I've talked to some of you individually about this, that there are ways to do this and that our colleagues on the board and on the council are willing to work all together to find the way forward. I truly believe we can, and I'm happy to continue this dialogue with each and every one of you. I know we can do it because we're on the same team. So thank you so much for your time tonight.
Okay, we do not see any additional hands raised at this point. So we have, oh, one more, okay.
We have Robin Gredinger.
Hi, you guys can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I actually didn't have anything planned, but I would be remiss if I didn't say anything. My name is Robin Gredinger. I live at My name is Robin Gredinger. I live at 501 Foxborough Drive. And I have been a school social worker for Norwalk Public Schools for the last almost 16 years and lived in Norwalk for 16 years as well. I think it's just important to note the increase in need that I've seen in the need for services across the board. I've worked at all levels from elementary to high school. And the need for services from general education students to special education students just increases, as does the needs for our families. It is not, it is just on an average day where you get a phone call and you have a family who is homeless and has nowhere to live. And you have your IEP kids that you need to be servicing. And then you have your general education kids that are knocking on the door at the same time, who are suffering from anxiety and can't go take the test that they need to take. So I think it's really important to note that these services are so important to have within the school because as much as we do have community, community-based services, our families rely on us because this is, we are an extension of families. So they do come to us for support and for services. And we finally got to a place where we've created enough, some more support to identify that social emotional needs are, are important. And so now take that away post-COVID would really be detrimental to our students because the needs are just so, they're, they're just so exacerbated because they don't have the coping skills that they need. And those socialization skills have really been stripped away from them because they didn't have that interaction. And because so much of their interactions now happen over social media. So I am begging you for the sake of our future and our students, to just please continue to keep counselors and social workers in school. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for what you do. I really appreciate it. Have a good night.
Next, we have Maria. Please unmute.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, could you see or hear me?
We can hear you. We cannot see you, but that's okay.
Okay. My name is Maria Robinson. I live on Pink Cloud Court. I have been a lifelong resident of Norwalk, a current, well, a taxpayer, obviously. Also, I have two children that are alumni. They went through the Norwalk Public School System. And thanks to them, they are doing very well. I'm also a general ed para at one of the elementary schools. I would just like to beg you to find the money somehow, somewhere. I understand it's difficult and I thank you all for taking the time to do this for these students that are going to be the future of Norwalk. I am seeing students coming into school totally different. I know it is because of the pandemic. However, when my kids started, life was different. Parents' lifestyles were different. We saw many parents had one-person income. Nowadays, in order to survive, there has to be two parents working. And the kids are getting the extra support that they need from everybody that is doing their job at the school, from the paraprofessionals, the librarians, you know, everybody is doing what they're supposed to be doing for these kids. I'm just begging that you find the money somewhere to support the future of the city because the kids are our future. I really didn't have anything prepared to say. I'm just speaking from my heart. I thank everybody for listening. I thank everybody in the school system for doing a great job. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next, we have Christopher. Please unmute.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Okay, my turn?
Yes.
All right, thanks. I, I, yeah, you know, I jumped onto the call because I received the emails. Chris, parent of a first grader. And I just wanted to chime in because I definitely value all the perspectives I've heard, heard about the, the loss that would be incurred if we lose these programs. I mean, yeah, it would be devastating if these were lost.
But I gave an address for the record.
Yeah, 20 Button Ball Trail, Norwalk.
Thank you.
20 Button Ball Trail, Norwalk, Chris Papadopoulos.
Thank you.
I'm just curious. I had a question. Are these, are these cuts being considered because of the money that's going into the new schools? Because I heard you guys were planning developments for the Norwalk High School. Is that, is that? I'm trying to better understand the reason behind the cuts.
Well, Chris, this is a public hearing where we will accept your comments. It's not a question and answer debate type format. So if you have any comments you'd like to share, we'll, we'll, you have, well, less than three minutes to share whatever comments you have.
Okay, yeah, I guess lastly, then in closing, if, if it is in fact due to supporting the costs associated with money going towards a new high school, at some point it would be helpful to learn what that would provide to the community once achieved. But again, I don't know enough to know if that's what's behind this. So that's all.
Thank you.
Jaclyn Capola, please unmute.
Larry, you still showing Christopher as a panelist? Jaclyn, can you unmute? There you go. No, no. You're still muted. You're still muted, Jaclyn. Jaclyn, can you unmute your device? Well, Jaclyn, one more time. If you cannot unmute, we'll have to move on. Okay, Larry, let's move on to the next person, please. Okay, can you remove Jaclyn as a panelist? Okay. Let the minutes reflect that Finance Committee member, Doran Zajewski-Aigna, joined at 7:10 PM. And Council Member on the Finance Committee, Brian Meeks, joined at 7:18 PM. This concludes the public hearing. On the operating budget, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Councilmember Jen McMur. All those in favor, show by the sign of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed have the same right. Any abstentions? The, the motion passed. If I'm correct, I believe from an IT standpoint, we have to disconnect from this meeting and dial back in on the Zoom link for the special meeting of the Common Council. So we will do that at this time.